How you doing? I can't hear you. You can't hear me.
Well, we both just changed it. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hi, Robin.
Hi there.
Hi, Robin.
Lou.
This, what are this painting, are these photographs behind you, Ralph?
The photo-
Yes.
The photograph on the wall is a very early map of the Chesapeake Bay area. Drawn, and it's not a very accurate rendition.
Nice. Yeah, how many, like, I mean, a couple hundred years ago, you mean?
It's about three hundred years old or something like that. I mean, it's a, it's a facsimile of it. It's not, of course, the real thing.
That's neat. How about you, Ralph? What's behind you?
Well, the top, the top one is River Road Presbyterian Church, which the, the, the building is still there, but the church is gone. And um, the, the bottom one is Salilo Falls on the Columbia River. Before it was flooded over and destroyed. Uh, and it's a bunch of Salilo Indians fishing for salmon.
Neat. That's neat. For sharing. Hi, Dave. How you doing? Veronique?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Doing good. How you doing?
All right. Back from our long trip and busy doing stuff at work.
Where were you again? Remind us.
Cyprus in Israel.
Cyprus in Isra-, oh, nice. So you were in Cyprus?
Yes.
That's cool. I've been there. I spent four hours there on a boat to Greece.
It was, it was, we were there during a cold spell and we got snowed on.
Really?
Yes.
Neat.
That's not what I think a Cyprus has, actually.
That's, that's right, but we did go up, uh, close to the top of Mount Olympus.
Ah.
I don't know if that is the Mount Olympus, but that is a Mount Olympus and, you know, there's a ski resort up there.
In Cyprus, huh? Neat. And you had a great time in, uh, Israel?
It was, it was a good time in Israel. It was nice to be, meet, uh, my son-in-law's parents. Well, we've, you know, they got married in February twenty twenty. And so we've been trying to get to Israel to meet them and, you know, and, and see them for two years now.
So you got to meet the in-laws for the first time? Okay. And how about you, Veronique? What's going on in your world?
Actually, I had to meet my in-laws also via Zoom because February twenty twenty, they had a death in the family and the planned meeting never happened. Before that, the kids were leaving, were in England, so it was never happening. And then we had to meet them via Zoom and then they got married in twenty twenty-one on a rooftop in Brooklyn, so it kind of worked. But, uh, I'm just back. Actually, we went two weeks to Saint Martin on the French side. And, uh, I'm training for half iron man. So I did my open water training and some, some, my husband's running, so. So it was, it was fun and the weather was steady. So we were quite happy about this.
Where is this? Your training?
Saint Martin, like in the Caribbean.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Did you say a triathlon, a half-triathlon?
I'm doing a half iron man in Cambridge, Maryland.
Wow, that is very impressive.
Yeah, and so are my daughters and so is my, yes, it's a family thing. There's five of us. So it's kind of a cool, this is our event of the year.
Making it upstairs, you know? Said some of us are proud of making it upstairs, you know?
Oh, come on, Ralph. I see you out there with-
Listen, it, it started with my son-in-law's dad when he got into biking in being in shape at sixty. He's now sixty-eight and he still does the bike portion. So. Yeah, there's always-
My father-in-law ran the, the New York Marathon like five or six times into his sixties.
Yeah.
Also, he was probably the last person to finish, but, uh-
Well, my husband said he's, he's going, he told the girls this weekend, sixty next year, and did the Montreal marathon at twenty and he's gonna try to get in for his sixty-eight. He goes, I'm gonna write them this letter. Please let me in. So anyway, so beside that, uh, not, not much.
Great.
A lot, but not much.
Well, it's good to see everyone. I see we also have Kumar in the background hiding behind the cloak of his, um, name. Welcome, Kumar. Anyway, I guess we'll get started. We have sort of, I'd say, well, what, what I surmise to be hopefully a short agenda. So we certainly should be done within an hour. Let's start with the approval of the March ten, uh, EC minutes. I guess everyone has had a chance to take a look at it and if you have any I, uh, comments, please let me know. Otherwise, can somebody motion to, um, to, uh, pass them? Please? Do I have anyone who will motion? Say it out loud.
I will motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Hand up.
It's a yellow hand up. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Uh, gotcha. Okay, unanimously passed. Wonderful. Okay. I have written the minutes for the last two times. We did agree collectively to do the rotation. So I'm either hoping somebody will step forward and say, okay, I'll do the next one. Or we can just assign it by alphabetical order. Anybody want to do the next, the minutes for today? We have a recording of it going in progress. Okay. So.
I will not volunteer. I just finished a whole board for, like, for, or yeah, I have a board meeting in two weeks for something else. Finish hours and hours this week of this. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I think we'll put Ralph in the, yeah, actually Dave can't be in, in this rotation because he was the one who was doing it for like a whatever year. And, uh, so thank you, Ralph, for doing the minutes. I recommend that you, um, you know, do it quickly so you have some thoughts in your mind, uh, and that way it's, it's, it's done quick. All right, um. One last thing, just to think about, nothing to discuss, but we will, Jeffrey Slaven mentioned that, you know, that preferred amount of members is like nine versus seven. There's a chance that we might lose a member. Um, I'm not sure, but if anyone has any ideas of who could be a, a member of our committee, that'd be just something to think about in the back of your mind. I'd appreciate it. Nothing needs to be actionable at the moment. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. I, uh, wanted to talk about two-stroke gas-powered machines and whether or not we have the appetite to consider that ban as well. Basically, personally inspired by their, they're doing that in California or in the process of doing that. So, you know, I have to say, um, before talking about this, that, um, I have started to, actually, I'm jumping ahead to this, the, to the, the distributing the gla-, the gas-powered leaf blower flyers. We've, you know, done that all around town now. Then I've actually started going to the landscapers. When I hear the noise, I go outside with an English and Spanish thing and I go up to them and I say, listen, you know, in a nice way, like we have a band coming up in September. We want everybody to start transitioning now and like across street neighbors. You know, I told them, look, your, your workers don't even have any masks on or any ear, um, protection and, you know. So, you know, and then they started putting masks on these people that have no idea that their, their health is at risk. So it made me happy, actually, that, you know, I could, that I was actually helping someone's health. And also I think we should, if we have any extras, to, if you hear a noise outside, you know, I would recommend considering going out to that landscaper, just sort of introducing yourself, you know, and, and these are what I just said, basically, just giving it to them. Don't say, you know, just be, do it in a friendly way. You know, I'm starting to do that. I think it's a, it's a good way. Uh, people seem to know what's going on though. And they say, oh, like I, this backyard neighbor was using it and the landscaper says, yes, I know it's coming up in September, but we're just, you know, and yes, I'm using all electric and then art for our DC clients. I'm like, well, why don't you just start doing it here? And they said, yeah, maybe we will. So anyway, I just wanted to share that little snippet. Any comments about that?
There's a comment on the two-stroke, you know, uh, I switched over to a battery-operated, you know, a mower like several years ago. And it's been great. Uh, the main problem I always had was maintaining it over the winter. And I was always having to clean the carburetor and, and get it up and running every spring. And I've not had to deal with any of that with the electric, you know, it's been zero maintenance issues. Uh, you know, it's been perfectly fine besides my lawn and I have a reasonably good-sized one. So I highly recommend switching over to electric or a battery-operated.
Great.
Yeah, we had a battery-operated one and the batteries just wore down so quickly that our last lawnmower is corded and a hundred-foot extension cord all over the yard. But it's a lot lighter. It's lighter to push around and cuts just as well.
Yeah. We have a, I have a very powerful electric blower that we use in the, uh, the, uh, late fall, like in December, and it's, you know, we have a hundred-foot cord, but our landscaper is happy to use that. And as far as the two-stroke engines, yeah, I mean, I think it should be a nice, um, extension of what we've already done. And I think it would be, hopefully be well-received by the town council. Um, and I don't think there's anything new and different about this idea. It's just more, more comprehensive. I mean, the science is all over the place, all over the country, all over the, you know, different municipalities are, are considering this. Veronique, do you have any comments? Or Robin?
As, as you may know, I don't have grass, so, at all. Uh, the other option is I believe my neighbor in front has it. No power. Don't you have something with no power at all, Robin?
I do, but I actually use a battery power more these days.
Okay, so you know, that's the only thing I've ever had. My dad had that. I mean, we just, I've never had a real electric one, except I think one house, one other house we had in DC where we hired people. But I think in terms of noise, one other thing that I'm seeing with the landscapers is they came in gang. You know, so I don't know, like, does, you know, and they have these huge ones. So do they have, does it exist, two-stroke for these huge commercial ones, like the types that you're talking about? I, I have no clue.
Well, the two-stroke engines are the ones, is, is a type of engine that's used for the leaf blower, which is very loud and efficient. And, and also the other one that it's used primarily for is the weed whackers.
Yeah, I think most, most mowers that are sold now are four-stroke. I did, some, I mean, it may be residents who own old two-stroke mowers who be, might be, might be most affected, actually. Because it's the old mowers that are two-stroke.
Okay, so I guess my question is more, uh, if, if you had a ban like this, does, does that work for landscapers that have a technical option?
Yes, they do have a alternative. They have battery-powered weed whackers.
Weed whacker, and what about for?
The mowers are four-stroke engines, so they-
They're working. That's all I was-
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Not really related to the mowers, even though Robin brings up a point about the old mowers, but those are very, more rare, I think, Robin.
Probably these days, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't seen a two-stroke engine mower in a while, but anyway. So it seems like people are pretty supportive of this idea. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I mean, basically, the idea is that we would recommend that the town council considers ex-, uh, extending, you know, the, the span of leaf blowers to all two-stroke engines.
Sure. Anything to reduce that, that noise?
Yeah. Well, it's, I mean, yeah.
If, as Robin says, the lawnmowers aren't a big deal. There are only a few, and if somebody maintains their lawnmower that well, that lasts that long, I'm not sure they should be penalized. And eventually they will kind of die out. The, rather than, uh, extending the ban to every two-stroke, uh, how about if we just really focus on, uh, the weed whackers?
And you could, you could add that a, a, an overall ban will exist, but like much more in the future, right? Like five years from now, you know, understanding that some people have some old, like, whatever. We expect in five years from now, none, none of them will be working, right? And-
Right.
Something like that.
Two-stroke. Okay, I think. I think, I mean, I think pretty much this is a mute point in the sense that I don't really think there are any two-stroke lawnmowers anymore. But even still, to respect, uh, Ralph's thoughts, I think we can just sort of make it to extend it to, to two-stroke weed, weed whackers. Um, and not have to sort of make it sort of, um, that's really the only other two-stroke engine. And also, I do think that chainsaws are two-stroke engines. And people, the tree, the tree people need chainsaws that are two-strokes. So I think weed whackers is probably the way to go.
All right.
I have, I have a battery-operated chainsaw.
Yeah. Well-
It's not a big one. It's a fourteen-inch, but it does all the, you know, the, the pruning and that kind of stuff you need to do. Not gonna top down a big tree. So, yeah, it's totally switched over to a battery system.
Right. I think, I think you still have to have a, um, engine, a, a, a nice engine for, uh, tree cutting with a two-stroke or four-stroke on a cha- chainsaw. Uh, they're, they're just, the energy density is a lot greater on, on a yeah, for basically ice engine than it is on a battery. And you don't normally need all that power, which is why batteries are good for all the other lawn tasks. But when it comes to cutting down a tree, then you really do need that power. And that's why the internal combustion engines are the right tool for that.
Okay, um. I think we're ready to make a motion to, for, to extend the, the ban to, um, two-stroke weed whackers. Does someone want to make a motion? Please?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Um, what you just said, I'll, I'll figure it out, how to write it in the minutes. Don't have to do the word smithing right now.
Okay. Great. Um, do I have a second? Okay, Veronique, thank you. And, uh, can we all please, uh, vote yes by raising your hand? Okay, we got a unanimous again. Excellent. All right. Moving on, next item is-
Quick question on that, though. Are we just moving, making a motion that it's a good idea? Or do we want to have a time, a timeframe?
I mean, my, my thought was to recommend that they ban it immediately. So, you know, upon, upon the council's review and voting. So, I mean, that's sort of pretty much how all the recommendations are, that it should-
We, we would probably put some kind of date on it so as to give people warning, um.
Okay.
This, uh, leaf blower thing has gone on for years, so I don't-
So we can do it for, um, you know, September twenty twenty-three?
That gives people a chance to wear them out and buy new ones.
Okay. Is that, how does that sit with everyone else? Anybody have any objections to, uh, September one twenty twenty-three, Veronique? You like that? Was that a yes? Okay, I guess that's a yes.
Yes, sorry, I need to, I'm on something else. I need to double check, so.
I, you know, I'm fine. I think that's a good idea. I think, I want to, you know, it took us a while to get everybody aware of what we're doing before. So I think twenty-three is the proper timing to give people a chance to know what's going on.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so then please make the recommendation wording to include that, Ralph. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ralph, for that thought. And then now the next subject is basically what's, uh, called recycling corks, natural corks. I've been, I've been contacted, I get these emails from different people, uh, around town asking how, you know, saying, sharing ideas to make our town more sustainable. And this person whose name is Laurent Guinan. And he has, I'll just read his letter. I'm a Somerset resident on a more rich place. I have personal and professional interest in wine and sustainability. In that can't, context, my small business is sponsoring a natural wine cork recycling program called Recork. The sponsorship entails managing a point of collect, of collecting and sending the corks in bulk to California for reuse in multiple industries such as shoe soles, insulation for houses, et cetera. These types of applications replace those from petroleum-based foams and products. With this email, I would like to ask the town of Somerset to allow me to put a small bin next to the entrance of the Somerset Town Hall for the purpose of collecting used natural wine corks. There's no cost for the town of Somerset. I will take care of gathering the corks collected at the town hall and shipping them bulk on a regular basis. Thank you so much for your consideration and for presenting the idea to the council. Don't hesitate to call me if you have any questions. Best regards. So they basically want to, this person basically wants to, is recommending that the town considers placing one of his boxes or their boxes, um, somewhere near the front door to collect, um, corks. Any comments, thoughts?
Three things. First of all, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Second thing, I think that, why don't we encourage him to contact Somerset School as well? Because the number of kids who come in every single day, whose parents were drinking wine last night, I think he'd get more at the school. Um, and the third is corks are compostable, so they can go in the, uh, in the white buckets. Although this is better.
Mm-hmm. It's more of like repurposing as opposed to-
I'm all for it.
Composting, yeah. Nice comments. Um, anybody else want to respond or add?
I, I, it seems like a no-brainer. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do it. This person wants to take the effort and, and take the initiative. Why shouldn't we support it?
And maybe he's our next member of the committee.
And maybe, yeah. There you go. Um, Veronique, any comments, questions?
No, not really. I think he, you know, he's, he's doing something original. I just don't know how much he'll collect. Um, and, you know, personally, for the viability of a small company, that can kind of work, but you know, you almost have a, have another way that's more direct for people. For schools, you know, I don't see a problem, but I could see that the school, you know, is related to wine, blah, 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 might not want to do it. So, you know, he may have to find it in, in, another, uh, another ve-, you know, venue. The, the, the thing we need to, is that something that would be outside? I think then it's efficient. Right? It's just like a long tube, maybe that people put outside. And then maybe then it's accessible to other, like nearby neighborhoods.
Well, I think it's-
Of course. If it's not outside, it's useless because like Monday, you know, the day that it's open doesn't really-
Well, the cork receptacle, he's, he's, um, recommended it's outside the town hall, like on the porch.
Okay.
On the porch. And as far as the, the school's concerned, I think, you know, what I would probably do, Ralph, is just write that person an email and say, you know, you might also- What's that?
If, if he's making all this effort, it's just a suggestion that he contact them as well.
Right, yeah.
What about the libraries?
But that would be sort of a separate email unrelated to our activity.
Our thing. True.
Okay, so, um, does somebody want to motion, um, that we go ahead and recommend the town council consider in putting this cork recycling bin in the, uh, on the front porch of the town hall? Please? Okay, Ralph?
Second.
Okay, second. I guess you're back, Ralph, basically saying what I, what I said is what the motion is. Okay. And everybody in favor, uh, raise your hands. Uh, Veronique, we lost you.
Her hands are in her lap. There she-
Thank you, Veronique. Okay, moving on, um. We'll skip this one. It has to do with something. I was hoping Patty was going to join us about tree planning activity, celebrate Arbor Day. I don't really know much about what this topic is, and I was hoping her to, to talk about this, so. Let's come back to that. Maybe she'll join us in the next half hour. Next item is compost crew update. So I'll start. Maybe Robin can jump in if you so choose, but our hope was that they would, the town council would, would consider an opt-out program, which we recommended. And then I was informed by Matt that the extra amount necessary, assuming everybody joins, the, the remaining households would, um, which would require an additional thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars annually for the town to support a more comprehensive composting. So originally I was told by the town council that they didn't want to consider it because it wasn't, uh, the, the, the contractor doesn't expire till June. And that was this, they sold me that four or five months ago, but then now we got close to it. Now they say we don't have money to do it. So maybe I just didn't follow protocol carefully, because, um, it seems like we just missed an opportunity. Maybe Robin, you can jump in and share your two cents about that.
Yeah, I mean, right, there, there are two pieces. One, our budget process and, and I don't think opt-out's a good idea. And I'll explain why. I don't think opt out is a good idea, and I'll explain why in a minute.
You don't think what is?
Opted out is a good idea, and I'll explain that in a moment.
Oh, right, yeah. So that will lead into the pay for trash idea. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's. We're nearing the end of fiscal year twenty-two at the moment. And so most of our twenty-two money is accounted for. And we just established a budget for twenty-three in which we. Tied in the compost amount at current levels, which is about twenty-seven thousand dollars for. A hundred and eighty-eight odd households that are currently composting. And that can see a little growth in it, which is tends to happen year on year. But it can't see a big growth in it on our current budget. We'd have to. Find money elsewhere for that. So that's that's what Matt is talking about then, the twenty-three budget, which has just been passed. Doesn't have money in it for the thirty-six thousand for opt out. Why I don't think it's a good idea, as I mentioned to you on the phone, is what you tend to get with it is undermotivated people. In other words. People who have. Not actively sought to compost, but are given a compost bin. Because they didn't opt out. And what are they going to do with it exactly? Means they have to change their behavior in order to compost at this point, and are they motivated to change their behavior? And that's that's the issue. The alternatives that I've seen does work is called, well, originally pay as you throw, we're now calling it save as you throw. And the principle is that the town buys the, well, I mean, there are different ways to implement it, but the simplest way of thinking about it is. The town buys bins of two different sizes, big bins and little bins, and makes them distinctive. So that the trash company will only pick up landfill trash from the big and little bins. And then you rent bins as a resident, and you rent your mix of bins, just one little bin or one big bin or a big bin and a little bin. And you price big bins at more than little bins. And what happens then is that people have an incentive to reduce their number of bins or to only have a little bin instead of a big bin. And so they're looking for other ways to dispose of their trash rather than in landfill, and that's when composting can. Seem to be motivated. Oh, I can put it in compost. That gets it out of landfill trash. That saves me money. So that that has been implemented in something like twenty-five percent of cities and counties in this country already. Successfully, and various studies have been done that show it does reduce landfill trash and increase recycling and composting successfully. So I would see that as a more desirable option to think about than. Opt out. The other thing it does is it takes paying for landfill trash out of property taxes where it now is. And makes it a direct fee to pay for land for landfill trash. And that actually is a fairer system. It means that those people who have more trash pay more money. And it's also the kind of system that most other municipalities actually currently use. We are very. Different in that we pay for our trash services through property taxes entirely.
So what are two quick questions to that? One is, does our, is there, does good, good company? Picks up our trash recycling, would they, could they be able to to do this type of service where they?
I can't imagine they wouldn't. I mean, you've you've just got to tell them that you're only going to pick up from the. Yellow bins, however you made the distinctive, you know, the ton of Somerset yellow bins. And that's all they have to do, and I don't, that's just a simple instruction. I don't think that's challenged.
But you're saying that if I put less money, I mean, that I thought you were indicating that each house is. Has to be weighed when it's.
No, 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 no. I mean, there are, as I said, there are different save as you throw systems, and you can buy expensive trucks that. Will weigh the trash and have set it to individual account of the household that's weighed with a great software program that's. Built into the truck. We're not doing that. That's too expensive for us. A simpler method is simply big bins and little bins, and that's also used. And so.
So it's a collective measurement of our whole town of landfill and compost.
Well, no, it it it, well, ultimately, it is, you're not measuring anything. You're, all you're doing is you're renting a small bin, and you can only put so much stuff into a small bin, and therefore it is on average a lot lighter than a large bin. Where you put a lot more stuff into it. So you are putting less trash into the truck when you're using a small bin.
I.
You're using a large bin.
So I think there's a few principles there that actually we've talked about looking at things holistically. With the next contract. Pay, pay for, you know, how much trash you have, landfill trash is absolutely fine as a concept. I just think the little bit and big bin is just one of the options that's out there. I don't know. I think in Etika, they pay for their bags.
There are different ways to do it.
There's different ways of doing it, and I think it's important once you just, first of all, you decide on a policy. That is based on, you know, size of how much you sent to landfill. That being said, I actually do not. I I think it will take time to get to that transition and to facilitate the change in behavior. That's where personally, when I suggested. The to everybody, you know, everybody gets access. I think about it about access. To a compost access, like almost forced access to the composting bin. It's because actually, that's, I I don't believe that it's only the people that are involved. In a household, you have kids. So, you know, if instead of. It it would be very efficient then for someone to go through the kids in Somerset. And start talking about the importance of composting. I can tell you that if the compost bin in there, they're going to make their parents do it. So I'm not, I, you know, this is where I think, like, I think I have some neighbors on the strip that just didn't. Understand it was an opt-in. They didn't do it by a little bit of laziness. So for me. I I think, you know, it's it's part of the transition. To get everybody one, because when you're going to go through that big change. It's still going to be, let's say, big bin, little bin. Your objective as a town is still going to be to limit landfill. Even if people pay. Because people have the amount, people here have the money to pay, so it's actually not that that's going to make the change. They need the habit to change. So I'm, you know, I'm I'm kind of. I I don't see why that rules out. The the idea of an uptown program. You know, personally, I would force it. It was just like, that's like not an option. In Quebec, it's forced.
Forced what?
Ability. It's, everybody has to compost, and they making, you know, big. Every city is, you know, getting a commercial-sized composters, testing what works in our city. Giving everybody, when when I recycled in my apartment, they're giving me purple bags. Blue bags for recycling and composting an orange bag, and I can throw this down the chute. And they do the splitting later on. It's forced. It's a law. I need, I have, as a citizen of a community. I have a responsibility to be environmental, and this is where I think we got it wrong.
All I can say is it's not the American way, but.
No, I know, but we've got it. No, no, I think the Americans have changed during COVID and during now. There's, there's a climate emergency. There's a waste emergency too. It's all part of it. So why is it that we will facilitate? You know, I think our role is to facilitate people putting less in landfill. And not just by it's going to cost you more if you have more. You've got to work more if you have more. You have a family of four or five years at home. So I'm, you know.
All right, Veronique. I want to hear some other comments too. Go ahead, Ralph.
Well, I'm I'm just. The the budget's just been done. So any change that we make in composting or recycling or trash is not going to be made for a year. This is the first I've heard of some of the ideas that Robin has brought up, and we're just a few people. You know, maybe we need to study it more, talk about it more, dedicate a meeting to it. And then come up with some ideas. It doesn't have to be done at this meeting. One thing that I think we can do is encourage people to compost, people who don't know about it, for instance. And the more people who volunteer, who opt in, when it's an opt-in system. The the less difference there will be. Cost-wise for an opt-out program. So, you know, maybe, maybe we kind of close that gap.
Maybe we can have some type of forum about composting, and and people can come, and we can. Do a survey or something to get people more activated about the idea. Dave, do you have any ideas?
I think that we need a little more thought on it. I'm not quite following Robin's idea, but. I'm fully supportive of ways to incentivize. A less materials getting into the trash stream. And encouraging composting. I I'm open to new ideas. I'm not sure if any education will necessarily change people's behaviors on composting. But I think that some kind of outreach might be useful. I just don't have a good idea on it at this point.
Yeah, I'll send you all the link. Montgomery County is considering moving to a save as you throw. System for the county trash system, and they're. Some way along the way to do that, and they've got a website that has a whole presentation on save as you throw. And I'll send that around to the committee so you see what it is.
Yeah, no, I I think the idea generally is good. I just, you know, really sincerely, if we're going to ban. Blowers, you know, and then other things. I don't know why we can't. Get people to understand that same community, like, you know, we can't force them to do this too.
The county actually is considering compulsory composting. I got the same concerns about compulsory composting that I have about. Opted out, which is you get too many undermotivated people.
Right.
And.
You don't want to be just throwing away money.
Comes with time. It's habit, but that's okay. We've got to sell it, so that I agree. So if it hasn't been sold enough, sold like understood as good in the town, we should do it. I really think the kids can have a big part. You know, it's like the joke of scraping all your.
I I would, I would love to do an analysis of the forty-five percent of. Households who are currently composting, what percentage of the homes with kids are composting? And I suspect that that's very parallel.
No, maybe there is a survey to understand who's left. And who's in to, I know we have surveyed people in the past through the town newsletter, but maybe that's a step.
I think I think a survey of some sort, it could be very helpful and.
That's a good idea.
I think what I'll do is I'll, maybe I'll draft like some questions, and then I'll send it around, and then you guys can like edit it and sort of. And we'll sort of maybe find some poignant questions that. You know, might be. You know, illuminate the problem more clearly.
I, it might, I think that this is something slightly broader. I I don't, I'm against what you're suggesting. But I think we need to get people to kind of make it visible. And I know this is not just a Somerset thing, although we could probably put them at the town hall or at the pool. You know, if you go to Quebec, if you go to a lot of European locations, you'll see four bins. You know, where there's one trash, you know, you know, can, you know, in the United States.
Even on the street.
On the street, just there along the street.
Public.
Public. And, you know.
You're too downtown to sense that.
Right, well, that's good that we're starting to see that, but it's like, you know, why have we been doing this forever? Getting people to understand that there is composting. You know, but even, but it's it's an education. It's, we have taken on at our community, our religious community. After our events, you know, try to make them compost, you know, everything be composted. And it's still very hard to get people to understand what is compostable and what is not. You know, it just, it's a real hard concept to get across.
People struggle with what's recyclable too.
Exactly.
Even in my family, which is, you know, so environmentally conscious.
I still struggle with what's recyclable, and I'm on the solid waste advisory committee of the county, and it still focuses me, so.
Yeah.
I think composting is easier in terms of.
A lot easier, yes. Anything organic is compost.
Yeah.
I think that's one step, actually. It's almost like a joke. If you have a hard time recycling compostings.
Well, that's actually, okay, so I think we have some general ideas. Let me draft up some questions for a survey. It seems that could be, it'd be nice to get a pulse of our town about composting with the survey, and. Then at our next meeting, we can, we can react to that. All right. Let's move on. We have, it's eight forty. Is that okay? Do you like that idea, Robin? Okay. The bee update, so. I can say some things, and maybe. Robin can also, but basically. We do have somebody who is willing to do it. Elizabeth Harris, I've already told you about that. The town still has some concerns about bee stings. Robin and Steve have recommended that our committee have like a forum of some sort. Where we bring some experts in to just talk about bee hives. And to that. Suggestion, I've, I I've asked Elizabeth Harris to make some recommendations of local experts, and she's given me like two or three people that are. You know, either. Manage manage bees in public properties in Montgomery County or just very knowledgeable bees. So I've already got some candidates for an upcoming forum. I guess the hope is that. Having a more in-depth process. That people can learn about bees. There can be less concerns about, I guess. Bee stings is is one of the things.
Bees don't sting unless they are basically, you are going after their, the bee stings, people are from yellow jackets.
And I've explained that to my fellow council members, and they still react. And they worry about kids attacking the bee hives as well, because they're in public property, not on private land. Which I go, it's up to the kids, and if they get stung, it's their own fault at that point, but that's, that's not a very good reaction and realize.
I know, anyways, and bees are around us all the time. So, you know, I won't say anymore. It's just, it's just silly.
Yeah, I agree. And if I were to tell the story to the bee communities in Africa that I. Support our Brother Earth Project, they would find it a very odd conversation, but anyway. We are here. We're sort of a liability. Motivated or influenced society, so.
And we missed the flow, by the way.
The what?
The flow.
What's that?
That's this right now is the time when the most of, you know, the blossoms are out. And so, you know, it's in a sense, yes, you can install them later, but, you know, it's the best time to install them is early spring.
Correct. We've missed, we've missed this year now. It's it's passed, but Elizabeth has offered to. Come and install like in the winter time coming up, so we're going to have to delay. Also. You know, Jeffrey has indicated that they have to sort of go through the the normal protocol or not. I don't know about whether they have. Interviewed enough beekeepers and chosen in in a proper way. I don't know, Robin, is that still an issue?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've, in the interim, have now got a procurement policy, and he's saying this has to apply here. Not necessarily is the answer, because there isn't a fifteen thousand dollar exception if. Action costs under fifteen thousand dollars, then we, the procurement policy does not require it be completed.
Right.
And obviously, this does is under fifteen thousand dollars, and so therefore you don't necessarily need to.
Right. Zero, zero cost.
Right, Jeffrey wants to apply it, however, as he thinks there may be opportunities for others to. Serve the town in this way.
So I have one question I'll put out there for whatever expert comes. There's a lot of, I don't know where where I'm seeing those readings. And I'm seeing that in May, I think you're, because it's this blossom season, you're supposed maybe to tell people not to mow their lawn.
I did that already in this most recent town journal.
Sorry, I did not read it. Sorry, I did not read it. No more me, but maybe it's where I read it, right? I'm not sure.
Doesn't matter.
It's, it's out there and I think it's kind of a.
Yeah.
Again, it would reduce the noise.
Yeah, well, I've recommended that people also consider like mowing every other week as well, which would reduce the carbon footprint and. Noise by half and one foul food, which is the way I do my lawn. Okay, so that's that. And I think our last item for tonight is World Environment Day and in that. Connecting that with the shredding day event, which is gonna be on June eighteenth. Yes, Saturday. So. We're gonna have the same event we had last year. Dave has, has already indicated that the LED light guy is gonna be showing up again, which is great. He was very pleased last year. Like he said, it was like so successful, right, Dave?
Yeah, yes, they were very positive. They thought that, you know, it was a great event for them.
And I thought we could also invite people with electric bikes, maybe in addition to cars, just anything that's electric. They can bring it to the event if they want to share it.
Talk to the tennis players, though.
What's that?
Talk to the tennis players. Carrie Wofford.
Yeah, I talked to Carrie. She was fine with the idea of having them park their cars on the street. During the morning time, so have the full lot. You know, part of me, to be perfectly honest, is still a little bit concerned that that road coming in is not a two-way road. It's very difficult to. You know what I mean? So I don't feel, even if we have an empty parking lot and the trash, the shredding truck is there. I don't see the, the issues of traffic flow completely solved.
Parking lot of the pool is but much better suited for that, but the tennis court seemed to be the desirable place, so.
But why have we not? Isn't there some reason we can't use the pool?
Well, you can do it during in-season because obviously it's full of cars using the pools in-season, but you can do it.
Right. So maybe we should consider doing it out of season in the future, so it's safer.
Yeah.
I think so. Maybe we could do it like in May next year, you know what I mean? Early May.
Right.
Okay, so does anybody have any other things that they want, they would like us to consider for that? Day to make it. I mean, my personal feeling about World Environment Day and Earth Day is that, like, you know, I just, you might have seen one of these Mother Earth. Emails we just sent out, but I, I, I think every day has to be Earth Day. I mean, the idea that people. Take time out for one day to be special is, I think, a complete hoax. You know, so I, I personally don't need to celebrate or. Delineate this day. I'd rather have, do all the things that we're doing, which will have impact on our town and our, you know, region. That happens daily. Any thoughts?
Well, I agree with you. I mean, they, they are, but they, they kind of highlight what people are doing so as to. They're meant to be education so that others can learn from them. In that sense, they have value.
Yeah. I mean, they do all these things now, you know, Black History Month and. I don't know, I feel inundated, but I guess all to raise awareness. There's nothing negative about that, so. I mean, I, I thought of the idea of maybe bringing the, the. The MEP inflatable booth. Does everyone remember that booth? That I had it at the Somerset Race one year. It's like a big, huge inflatable. Which is, people can go inside and read about what people around the world are doing more sustainably. So we can hypothetically put it down there and that could just sort of. Have a big visual splash. We could, I don't know whether there's any electricity down there. But I guess we could run a wire from the garage or something like that. Any, I mean, I, I would mind, I, I don't like, we could do that on the grass. On the far side. If we went to, what do you, do you have any thoughts about that? Yes or no?
Yes, if there's space for it there, sure, it'd be a good idea.
Okay. And typically with that booth, we put a setup a table with posted notes and people can actually write on the posted notes. Like what their next sustainable action is and they take it off and they, they stick it on the, the booth and then people see a whole bunch of. Posted notes on there and that serves, that actually can be very effective, believe it or not. We've had that, we've done that on many different places like at YU campus. We did it at the National Building Museum multiple times and it's actually. It gets people pretty ramped up and excited to sort of see all the. You know, the commitments and they read what other people are doing. Okay, so looks like we lost Veronique.
Yeah, she sent the text. I mean, she did a chat thing.
Okay. I think it's, I think we've pretty much have covered all the things that we need to. Does anybody have any other last items before we bring our meeting to a close? I know Kumar, you've said a few things in this. I didn't quite understand. You apply here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that rebate program is still in effect, but. I just thought it might be something you would wanna.
Montgomery County rebate program to turn in a gas-powered leaf floor for an electric leaf floor. And I think landscapers should be interested in it.
Right. So. What is your suggestion that, that maybe I can write about it in the next article? Let's say, and that way I can. Homeowners can let people. Know about this and share that with. Share, share with their landscapers. Kumar, if you'd be kind enough to like. Write that stuff and email it to me so that I can sort of maybe. Transfer it into the, a document where I'm writing this article and I can add that as like one of the paragraphs. Is that okay?
Sure, I'll send it to you. I, I don't know if it's still in effect. Because the deadline was March and then they extended it, but I couldn't find the new deadline, but I'll look for it.
Okay, I mean, if you wouldn't mind doing that little research to see whether it's actually still. Biable, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, guys. Thank you, everybody, for tonight. We finished under an hour.
Yeah, amazing. Hey, I have a question. Barton, I, I delivered all of Trent Street and Uppingham Street, but I noticed you didn't have anybody doing the. I think there are like three houses on River Road. Me to do those?
Yes, please. I, I'm actually unaware of that. Yeah, that's my bad. Thank you.
Okay, I, I, I don't mind doing it. I, I'm glad I have enough.
Yeah. So, just as, you know, Donna said that, you know, she sent it out and, you know, she didn't send, she didn't pass out many Spanish. Leaflets fires because people didn't want them, but you know, the whole point was that you hand out the Spanish and you tell the. The owners to share it with their landscapers. So, you know, I just wanted to reemphasize that that's the main reason why we have it in. Two languages because, you know, many of these landscapers are Spanish speaking. So anyway, I just wanted to reemphasize that. You know, it's obvious. Okay. Alright, everybody. All right, take care.
Hi.